And should the fire alarm ring, the fire exits are well signed. There's one with the way you came in, there's one through the doorway there, and there's one through the doorway here. And the assembly point is in Waitrose car park. Thank you. Tonight's meeting is the Community ONS meeting. Emma, have we got any informal questions?
There are no informal questions, Chairman.
Item one. Minutes of the last meeting. The minutes of the meeting which took place on the 18th of November have been laid on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of those meetings?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item two, apologies for absence and substitutes.
We've had apologies for absence from councillors Welland, Lee, Steele and Coburn, and councillors Mulliner and Brian Ellis are attending as substitutes. Thank you.
councillor James?
Chairman, can I just ask, I do apologise, I've missed the last two meetings, but did the ONS committee introduce a policy whereby substitutes had to come from a political party? They did?
Yes, would invite councillor Ellick Nichols to attend on your path.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Declarations of interest. In accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any non-percunory or disclosable pecuniary interests to declare, please? No? Questions from members of the public. Have there been any questions received from members of the public, please?
No formal questions, Chairman.
Okay. Item five. Before we start item five, can I ask the officers present to introduce themselves to the committee, please?
Hello, I'm Rob Anderton, Head of Environmental Services.
Good evening, Damian Roberts, Director of Operations.
Good evening, Kelvin Mills, Head of Community Services and Major Projects.
Good evening, Katie Webb, Community Services Manager.
Good evening, Peter Vickers, Head of Finance.
Brian Long, Chief Accountant, good evening.
Graham Clark, Director of Finance and Resources, good evening.
Thank you. And can I ask the portfolio holders who've graced us with their presence this evening to introduce themselves for members of the public's information? Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, councillor Thornton, a portfolio holder for leisure, arts and just about everything else?
Not quite. Councillor Carol King, portfolio holder for community safety, health and wellbeing, older people and housing operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Julia Potts, a portfolio holder for finance and property and also deputy leader. Thank you.
Thank you, portfolio holders, and thank you again for coming this evening. Okay, moving on. Item five, Committee Work Programme. The committee's work programme is attached at page five and details progress since the last meeting on several areas of work under the remit of this committee. This item is for noting, but do members have any comments before we proceed? Councillor James?
Chairman, thank you very much. The first question, please, is on the leisure centre procurement strategy. It's actually related to leisure centre and leisure centre usage, but I think it's worth raising. Cranly Leisure Centre, the pools have been made available to Horsham Borough Council, or District Council, I think, on the basis that DC Leisure, the management organisation, is currently refurbishing a site there. Can someone, maybe an officer, explain, is that permitted? Is that something that we've actually discussed and agreed as a council? And given that it's out of borough, it does seem a bit peculiar. That's my first one, if you don't mind. And then the second one is on the air quality action plan. And it's really a question on the basis that the European Union is updating its policy on this, as the decision's taken in November. Are we on track with those because of the implications for the Farnham air quality? Thank you.
If we can get Kelvin to respond first and then Rob? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. In response to the question, yes, it's quite complex. We have been dealing with PFP on sharing facilities across borders. Similarly, when we had Hazemere Leisure Centre being refurbished, the same offer was made across border, be it at Horsham, or Beardsford, to use their facility. So as long as it doesn't impact negatively on our users from Cranly, then we are happy to support them.
Rob, can you answer councillor James, please?
Chairman, I'm presuming this is about the infraction proceedings coming from the EU, which entails fines potentially coming to the UK government from the EU for failure to meet targets on air quality. And it's something that we as officers are watching very closely. I think it's important to say that we, as a borough council, are responsible for monitoring air quality. The nature of the air quality issues within Farnham are primarily transport related, and therefore most of the potential solutions rest with the county council. What we need to do as a borough council is ensure that we are doing everything we can to monitor, to put forward proposals and to lobby the county council in terms of potential solutions to the air quality issues within Waverley. And certainly, we're comfortable that we're doing that.
Councillor James, do you want to come back on the first point?
Yeah, I'd like to come on back on both, if you don't mind, with your indulgence, Chair. The first is that I was in a queue of people wanting to use the main swimming pool at Cranly Leisure Centre, only to find that a significant number of lanes have been closed off for Horsham residents. And there was quite a few of us who walked away, saying, what's the point? Because we had a look inside the pool and realised that the pool lanes just could not accommodate the number of people that would have used it. So I think that's just something to note, that picking up on the point you made, if it's going to impact negatively, that's exactly what it was doing at Cranly. And the second point is that, by way of correction, and please, a gentle correction, European Union is actually just about at the point of relaxing the air quality demands, and therefore the fines on the UK government are likely to change in terms of nature. But it's something I think that's worth exploring, because the aspect for Farnham and its residents and air quality there, there is an issue. Thank you, Chairman.
Kelvin, can you come back on that Cranly thing? Have we had any complaints from residents there?
No, I'd like to thank councillor James for bringing it to my attention. We haven't received any complaints, but I will look into it and get back to you.
Thank you. Rob, did you know what councillor James said about? Fine, thank you. Any other? Councillor Ellis?
Thank you, Chairman. On page seven of this, I'm looking at Waverley flooding, but the name of the lead officer is missing. Could I ask who it is, please?
Can you repeat that, please?
Page seven. Waverley flooding, there is no name for the lead officer. Could I ask who it is, please?
I'm sorry, yes.
Chairman, if I could respond, it's a combination of Roger Standing and Rob Anderton, who's on my right.
Any other comments? Thank you very much. Moving on to item six, Executive Forward Programme. The executive forward programme is attached on pages nine through to 12. Are there any items on the forward programme under the remit of the Community ONS committee that members would like to be brought forward before the committee to consider before they are taken through to the executive? Councillor Ellis?
Thank you, Chairman. Number three, Elstod and Weyben neighbourhood area plan. I just want to make a comment on this, actually, and I would like it to be understood entirely as the Elstod member, that the Weyben, Elstod and Weyben neighbourhood area plan really does relate to Elstod. Part of Weyben sits in Peppaharrow geographically, but there's no pedestrian access to Peppaharrow for this potential site. And I really do think that it should be seriously considered to sit in Elstod. Thank you.
Damien, do you want to respond to that?
Matthew Evans isn't here this evening, as we don't have any specific planning items on the agenda, but we'll make sure that information's passed to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Brian Ellis?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm on page 10, and the Borough Council local plan says that they anticipated earliest next date for decision, March 2015. At the recent Towns and Parishes meeting, Matthew Evans indicated that the March 2015 date would not be achieved. I wonder if we've got a new date yet, please?
I think Damien will answer this. Thank you, Damien.
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you for the question. The original date was always going to be provisional. The good news is that a substantial amount of the work necessary has now been completed. One of the most substantial parts was a consultation exercise where some 4,000 responses were received, which are currently being analysed. A really significant part of the work is completing a transport study, where the council is reliant on Surrey County Council. And you will see from the note on the earlier item, that the council, recognising the pressure on Surrey County Council, who are inundated with similar requests, has commissioned a separate transport study. And the commissioning of that is currently underway. And as soon as we've made progress with that, and we have a better idea of when that will be completed, I think we will then be in a position to look again at the timetable.
Any other comments, councillors? Councillor James?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to raise an ask that we bring forward the aging well strategy for Waverley. We seem to have a bit of a disconnect here, because we, on one hand, councillors have got a document issued on the 16th of January on pink paper, which means we can't discuss it here. And yet, we've also got item eight this evening, talking about the grant programme, which includes one of the organisations mentioned in the pink papers. So it seems a bit peculiar that, on one hand, we're discussing some aspects in open session, and others we've been told we can't discuss. So may I ask that we actually bring that one forward, even if it means we have to go into exempt at your next meeting? Thank you.
Katie, do you want to bring that? Who's replying here?
It's due to go to the March Committee ONS, the draft of the aging well strategy, which is, sort of encompasses, not just organisations we fund, but, you know, much wider services for older people. So I don't see that's a problem at all.
Yes, you can come back.
Chairman, can we just check that the ONS is going to see it before the exec and before council, rather than the other way round?
Good point.
Chairman, we'll make an undertaking that the ONS will see it in advance, as has increasingly been the case with these sorts of policy documents.
Councillor James, you happy with that answer? Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Thank you very much. Are members content to note the forward programme? Agreed?
Agreed.
Good, thank you. Item 7A, Financial Strategy. I would like to invite Peter Vickers to introduce the report to the committee. Peter?
Thank you, Chairman. What I'm going to do is give an overview of how we've compiled the budget and some of the detail that's gone into it, just so that we can walk you through the process. So this will cover items 7A and B, and then Mr Brian Long on my left here will give some detail around the specific budgets. So the process started with a review of the medium term financial strategy back in September, early September time, where we look at the next five or next four years of the finances for the council, taking into account the assumptions that are currently in play in the budget, and what known service changes are coming up, which then led us into the finance seminar, which many of the members will recall, on the 9th of September, which gave a strategic finance issues that we were looking at. And the point of the seminar was to gain a steer from members on where they were wanting the budget to go. The message was, at the seminar, that there are severe cuts in government funding to be expected, and along with budget pressures coming up as well. A budget gap of a million pounds was needed to be resolved for the 2015-16 budget, and over the following four years, it's rising to a 3.2 million pound gap in 2018-19. So that's the background context of how we entered this current budget round. Straight after that, the accountants worked with the services to review the operational budgets, starting effectively with the 2014-15 budgets, as they are at the moment, and informed as well from the budget monitoring that we bring forward monthly, to give us a good starting point for the 2015-16 budget. The finance settlement was received in December, just before Christmas, and the expected budget cuts that we were saying at the seminar played out to be true. We ended up with an overall reduction in government grant of 643,000 pounds. And you can see that's on page 23 of the report. So alongside the calculations done by the accountants, we had a staff chamber process that helped us to review how to go forward and address the budget issues that we were talking about back in September. So a draft budget then got produced, and many of these issues have been incorporated in effectively what we've got here tonight. And you can see, the finance settlement is on page 19, and it's reconciled back to the finance seminar on page 21. So it's just giving an idea of how the process is tied up from the beginning of the finance seminar in September to where we are today. The overall finance strategy for the general fund is on pages 13 to 18. This is effectively a report, a document, walking the readers through each aspect of the budget, introducing the key assumptions that have been applied to the budget, and also just introducing the methodology in certain areas of how we've treated the costings that have gone into the budget. Members of the committee are being asked to strategically review the proposed budget tonight, to pass the observations on to the executive. And to do that, Mr Long here, the chief accountant, will talk you through some of the key aspects of the detail and the appendices that are in the report. So I'll hand you over to Brian.
Thank you, Chairman. So as Peter said, I am going to run through the budget. What I was intending to do is to run through the annexes in order. Obviously, one of the main points of tonight is for members to ask any questions, and I'm happy to answer questions about the report anywhere, but the annexes should cover all of the report at some stage or other. By way of introduction to each annex, I'll say a few words that hopefully will help to inform members of some points of interest. And indeed, I have already received a few questions in our endeavour to answer those questions at the beginning of each annex. So, Chairman, starting at annex one. Annex one is basically an accountant's document, page 19 of the papers, which is a snapshot at the point in time when we prepared the papers, of where we are with the general fund budget. And clearly, most of these figures will actually alter by the time the council, the budget is set, and the budget book is prepared for next year. Just to highlight it at the bottom section, we've included the provisional settlement figures, and that includes the council tax freeze grant for next year, assuming that, of course, the council tax is frozen, and that shows at line 33. And very closely related is annex two, which is, again, is the overall budget position on page 21. Annex two is set out in the form of a sort of reconciliation as to where we thought we would be at the finance seminar, and the savings to be identified, and then the actual position. But I probably prefer to run through it in my own words as well, as far as a budget story goes. We needed to save a million pounds, which seems to be a sort of traditional figure now. And that basically comprises a government grant reduction, which in round figures is 600,000, and a supporting people grant reduction in round figures, 200,000. And of course, the fact that we actually need to live with inflation, and the government grant should be going up, let alone being cut, and that inflation figure in the papers before you is 200,000. So in total, that's where the million pounds comes from. But there was some good news in preparing the budget this year, in particular additional income, especially planning income, which we come across in detail, I'll highlight later on in the detailed papers, but considerable extra planning income in the region of hundreds of thousands. Plus, investor save schemes that the council's been promoting for quite a few years now are beginning to deliver savings, particularly the leisure centres, energy efficiency projects and the subletting of office space where the officers have been squeezed up. And in terms of where that shows on annex two, basically, unfortunately, annex two isn't line numbered, but in the middle of annex two, there's a budget change line which shows a credit of 556,000, which is a net saving figure that's already incorporated in the budget figures. Other good news was the council tax base growth, because of additional properties, basically, and related collection fund surplus. And together, that's an improvement of 170,000, which show the 42 and the 129 towards the bottom of page 21. The reduction list that's referred to is in annex four, again, in the middle of annex two. We'll run through that in detail later on. But the reduction list this year only highlights items actually requiring decision, and those are 298,000, because a lot of the savings have already been built in, as I just mentioned. And growth proposals unusually are actually slightly higher, 392,000, annex five. Other overall story point is that fees and charges are either being held, or increases are proposed well below 2%. To emphasise, car part charges are being held, with obviously no increases proposed. And members might have noticed, there are no individual sheets for car part charges. That's purely because we've tried to save the size of the agendas and save paper, and the schedules of car part charges alone run over six pages. So we haven't intended to put those up, but to make it clear in the reports to the executive and council that no increases are proposed for car part charges. So that's where we were with annex two at the time of sending the report out. And perhaps I could move that on slightly now, because there has been a development which will be reported to the executive and council, and there's a brief reference to the potential staff pay award in the report, which, of course, at the time of preparing this report, was to be determined, still is to be determined. But there is now a recommendation to the executive, which will go on to council, of a 1.6% pay award, which happens to be in line with inflation, RPI inflation at the moment. So that has a question as to how we afford it and still have a balanced budget. The three main points that I'd emphasise, the first is, on page 21, members will notice that the balance is actually a credit. So there was 21,000 spare in shorthand terms at the time of preparing these papers. So that would help towards the pay award. The most significant item is that, as I'm sure members are aware, the inflation figures. RPI did drop to 1.6%, but CPI dropped to 0.5% on the latest published figures. And, okay, members are probably aware that the council's contracts are now automatically index linked to the CPI. It is the March CPI, so we don't yet know what it will be, but all indications are that, you know, it's in a downward direction. So 2% was in the finance seminar figures, and that was a cautious and sensible figure, because that's the government's long term inflation projection. But there clearly is some significant scope for reducing the inflation provision. And the third point, which is particularly relevant to the staff pay award, is that the proposal is that the staff vacancy savings target will increase from 206,000, as in the current year, to 250,000. And that is very much well with, comfortably within the sort of savings figure that is actually being achieved for the last three years, including the current year. So that's broadly how the pay award would be accommodated. Perhaps I should pause to see if there are any particular questions on those two?
Good idea. Members, any comments? No? Councillor Monover, followed by councillor James?
Thank you, Chairman. If I could just go back to page 14, paragraph five, and the new homes bonus. Do I take it that what we're saying is that, should the new homes bonus disappear, the Revenue Reserve Fund will be tapped to make up the difference?
Well, because we're not using the new homes bonus to underpin any core budget figures, then there's not actually going to be a shortfall. But inasmuch as the new homes bonus issues for investor save schemes, if there is a need for further investor save type schemes, then yes, the Revenue Reserve Fund would be the obvious call to finance the capital programme, as it is now, but even more so in a few...
So what I was getting at is that on page 19, you've got a direct reference to it, in the finance by section?
Yes, the new homes bonus is used as a revenue contribution to capital, so line 34 comes in at line 34, and it goes out as part of line 17, basically. So there's 1.3 million ongoing revenue contribution to capital from the revenue budget, from council tax, if you like, and then the new homes bonus tops it up. So that's where the 2962 comes from. But if the new homes bonus were to cease, then the shortfall, if it were a shortfall, would be less capital resources, rather than a shortfall in the revenue budget.
Thank you, that's fine. Councillor James?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to pick up on this issue of inflation. When the budget was agreed, just under a year ago, myself and some others argued that the figure that was being set, the CPI, was too high. We now have a situation where I think the figure for CPI is 1%, and actually going backwards because of the impact of the oil prices, which isn't going to go away. And our own Treasury head, George Osborne, has actually indicated and gone on record as saying as he feels that it will go below 1%. So can I just ask and receive an assurance, shall we say, that we can still justify why this council is holding a figure of 2% on CPI?
Sorry, I obviously didn't make my previous comment clear. We, in the draft papers that were distributed, the figures... In the draft papers that were distributed, the figures, it was two per cent C P I. The actual December figures dropped from one per cent to naught point five per cent, and what I was saying is that the view is that we will be able to reduce the inflation provision broadly in line with a reduction from two per cent to naught point five per cent as far as contracts go, with the proviso that of course it is the March figure that will count, and that saving in the inflation provision will accommodate in effect part of the pay award, because trying to explain how we can fund the pay award, so broadly I'm agreeing with what you're saying.
I agree with that, actually.
I thought, chair, though, that the government was actually allocating councils a significant proportion of the money for the pay award, so we seem to be double counting here.
Yep.
Chair, we don't get any money off the government for a pay award, I'm afraid.
Are you satisfied with that, Mrs James?
I stand corrected, chair. I'll check my sources next time. Thank you, Graham.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Forzyszewski?
Thank you, chairman. I believe I heard the gentleman say that there was a feel-good story with regards to increasing income from planning. Can I ask then, please, that could some of those funds be used to prevent cuts in the compensatory grant to parishes and towns like Cranley?
It's not, sorry, it's not really for me to answer a question like that because it's clearly a policy decision, you know, I may advise in on the overall finances as opposed to what we should or shouldn't use money on, but clearly the planning income increase has arisen during the year and it hasn't, unlike the inflation, which has suddenly dropped in the last couple of months, and we have known about that planning income for quite a long time, it's been reported through budget monitoring, so it already is part of the budget picture, so there's no sort of spare planning income available, as it were.
Graham?
Chairman, and elsewhere within the papers, there are some proposals to increase the number of planning officers, and that's because the increase in income is from volume rather than charges, and so, you know, it's absolutely right that as volume increases, you know, we keep pace and keep, you know, the customer service going in planning. Just coming back on the point about compensatory grants, I mean, that was within the papers that were considered by corporate O N S last week, and there were some comments at corporate O N S about the compensatory grants as well, I can't remember whether they were sort of voted through and made their way through into the minutes or not, but that was discussed as part of the corporates remit last week.
Okay. Thank you. You want to come back on that, Mary?
Very quickly, chairman, yes, thank you for that, that's very helpful. I just wanted to throw that in because if we're going to have lots of development in various areas, and the parish councils have still got a job to do, and money is somewhere, perhaps we should be looking at it at some point in the future.
Thank you, okay. I think that's, ready for you again, Brian, if you want to take a leave.
Good, chairman. So move on now, please, to page twenty-three, which is Annex Three. Not a lot to say on this, it's really an information item, the bad news bit of the budget, I suppose, which details the government grant and where the six hundred and forty-three thousand reduction particularly features. Just to say that on the council tax freeze grant, we haven't included on this annex the freeze grant for fifteen sixteen, even though it will be paid for the government, because the purpose of this annex is to show the like-for-like reduction, and the like-for-like reduction is up to the current year, and the freeze grant is to compensate for no council tax increase looking ahead into fifteen sixteen, so that's why the freeze grant doesn't appear on this annex, even though it is part of our budget plans. The second line, of course, the freeze grant was for, in the current year, fourteen fifteen, is shown because it has become part of the fifteen seventy-four in column two, so the reduction is not just the two one oh two to the one five seven four, it's the two one oh two plus the ninety-one down to one five seven four. So it's six hundred and nineteen thousand on the revenue support grant alone, and then the members will see other reductions on the council tax support and the other benefits and admin grant. So that annex is really only for information as a ready summary of the government grant. So I then move on to Annex Four, which is the list of reductions, which actually starts on page twenty-five, but for this committee, it is, the detail is on pages twenty-nine and thirty for the community O N S committee. I have got one or two comments to make, but, you know, I can pick them up later on if other members have got any particular...
Right, members, comments?
Yes, so shall I make my comments on page twenty-nine and thirty? Firstly, the additional planning staff, which actually Graham Clark has just mentioned, so I'm probably going to pretty much repeat what Mr Clark has just said, but the proposal is for do additional planning staff to cope with the current volumes and significance of applications, and for one of those to particularly specialise in the pre-application advice, which will streamline the service. But the important thing, as Mr Clark said, we have already allowed three hundred and eighty thousand additional planning income within the service sheets, within the base budget, which is a continuation of the current levels, so although it does show us growth on the sheets, there still is a net saving within planning in terms of the income being higher than the costs involved. Then is a question which has arisen as to how those staff will impact on the contract cost and whether there be a contract saving, which I could respond to by saying that the contractors will still be required for specialist advice, as has always been the case, and we have allowed for that appropriate figure within the planning estimates. There also will be some agency contractors required to cover vacant posts, which in particular areas like planning where there's a need to deal with applications and housing where there's an immediate need to serve our customers, then most vacant posts are covered with agency staff. But we never actually budget for those agency costs because they come out of the very staff savings that they're covering, therefore it's not really, in budget terms, it's not really appropriate to talk about sort of savings in terms of budget savings to offset that hundred thousand, but I suppose it would be true to say that having those two staff would reduce the agency cost from a level which it otherwise would have been at, and it will help to make the staff vacancy savings more achievable. If members aren't particularly aware, the way in which we handle the staff budgets is we budget for a full number of staff being in the establishment, but because inevitably some staff will leave and there's some delay before they're replaced, we do budget for a vacancy, which is a figure I mentioned earlier, is effectively helping to pay for the pay award, which would be a quarter of a million pound in fifteen sixteen. So having a better staff complement makes it more possible to achieve a higher target, but not to actually budget for contract cost reductions as such.
Can I, I don't know where it's relevant to ask this question, you're looking at the Star Chamber savings, but on page twenty-nine, you've got French and Pond's Car Park, right? I know you're going to put them in line with the National Trust at Little Pond's, but that car park is absolutely appalling. It's like going through a quarry. And if you're going to put the charges up, can I request, on behalf of the residents who use that, that we do something about that car park, because it's not fit for purpose? Thank you.
Thank you, chairman, yeah, that is part of the capital programme going forward.
Thank you very much. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr John. Can I go back to this issue about the two extra staff going into planning? If we had a department that was satisfied that the level of work could be met by the level of people that was in the original budget, how come when you say there's more work or more work than we originally thought, do you increase the number of staff by two people but not put an increase in the amount of income that's going to be recovered? I mean, if these are two extra people on top of the numbers you had before, and they're all going to be busy, then they're all going to earn income, so we should have whatever the charge-out rate is for two extra people as a saving, as well as the cost side coming into the Star Chamber figures?
Yes, apologies again, I obviously didn't make it clear, I will point it out when we get to the annex, but there is three hundred and eighty thousand pounds additional income already allowed for in the budget figures on planning.
So are you saying the original budget didn't budget for enough people to do that extra work?
Yes, in simple terms, because we needed to identify that as a growth item, because it's a member decision to employ additional staff, we can't just build additional staff in, but we can build additional income in.
Yes, I get that, but I've never budgeted like that before.
I mean, it's very much in progress at the moment in the committee as part of the workings of it, which is why I'm sort of drawing attention to it.
Okay, thank you. councillor James followed by councillor Else.
Thank you, chairman. There's one figure that jumps off the page for me, and that's on page thirty-seven, which is this hundred and eighty-six thousand for the MRF contract risk. I mean, a hundred and eighty-six thousand is a hell of a lot of money, and it's got a couple of digits after it compared to any of the other figures. And what it's described as is the worst case of MRF fees rising due to a three-year subsidy, fair enough. Now, that's the worst case, what's the least case, and why have we not jumped at a figure somewhere in the middle? Because we seem to be assuming the very worst, and I can understand the reasoning for that, but surely we factored into our contract something that would manage this degree of risk, and it seems an awful lot of money to be allocating, potentially unnecessarily, and a bit of a shock, I think, for a lot of people.
Brian?
Yes, I'll start off, and Rob Anderton might wish to add something. I should say to begin with that the matter is subject to commercial confidentiality and indeed sort of ongoing negotiations with the contractor, so I won't go into detailed figures, but just talk in general terms. First of all, I'd like to apologise for the acronym creeping in M R F. It stands for Materials Recycling Facility, or I believe some people say Materials Recovery Facility. I'm sure members, most members are already aware, where we collect mixed recycling, then it has to be handled by a contractor, in this case it's the same contractor, Veolia, who collect the waste, so it's a sorting facility. As far as background to it goes, when we used to collect separated waste, then we used to sell it for a good income level, because some recycled, like paper and most famously clothing, is very valuable, whereas others like plastic and glass tends to be of minimal value, and there's always some residual waste that needs to be disposed of at cost. So in moving from the sorted material to the joint material, we made a very significant contract saving, because it is easy to collect it all in a wheel bin, but the price that we obtained from Veolia and agreed to also had an extremely attractive fee for the Materials Recycling Facility. I don't want to mention particular figures, but a lot of councils were paying typically thirty pound a tonne and upwards fees for the handling cost, which made it something that wasn't really worth looking at financially, and we got a much, much lower figure than that. But at the time, Veolia required upfront that they could only guarantee that low fee for three years, and then they gave us a floor figure or ceiling figure, I suppose it is, that they would probably have to move to at the end of the three-year period, which we're obviously now approaching. And it was all, there was a report, I think it was August two thousand and eleven, that did go into a lot of detail, and some members might be interested in taking a look back at that report, but it was detailed at the time, so it hasn't just suddenly arisen. But, you know, it is, as Diane James says, it is a worst-case figure, and the eventual figure that we build in, you know, might be somewhere nearer the midway point, that's a matter for the executive and council to decide, but we needed to put something here, and so it is, as it's spelt out, it is a worst-case figure.
Thanks, Brian. Before I go on to Rob, no, you're not going to bother.
Chairman, I think given the detail of that response and given the fact that this is still subject to the commercial negotiations, I think that's enough detail.
That's as far as you can go on that. councillor James?
Chair, with all due respect, I'm just a bit stunned that we've signed a contract for the length we have, and we've got a situation like that, that level, that degree of flexibility, on behalf which benefits the operator, shall we say, and not the council.
Well, councillor Armstrong?
Given the portfolio holder is here, and given this is getting more and more sensitive in terms of, you know, surprise at a contract, can I suggest that we leave this with the portfolio holder just to perhaps have a look at and take away?
councillor Potts?
Thank you, chairman. Thank you, Mrs James. I note your concerns, and obviously I can't go into a great deal of detail, I know Mr Long has just now given quite a lengthy explanation. What we'll do is go back to the portfolio holder and the leader, and I suggest we come back to you separately after this meeting, if that's all right. Thank you.
Yes, councillor James, can we make this...
Very quick, it's just not me that needs, I'd suggest that all fifty-six councillors get the same thing, even if it's unexempt, and I think we all would appreciate an explanation, and I take on board the commercial sensitivity, that's not an issue, but I think all fifty-six of us need to be aware of and understand the issues at stake.
Thank you, councillor James. What do the other members feel about that suggestion from councillor James? You agree? Okay, can we please note that and inform all the councillors? Thank you very much. councillor Else?
Thank you, chairman. I remain extremely sceptical. On page twenty-nine, when I see, and again, I mentioned this, that the joint O N S, the Careline Enhanced Service is going to come to an end, making a saving of forty thousand pounds. This concerns me, and I'm not sure that it's a wise decision. I feel that if you've got people identified who are in need of an enhanced service through a Careline service, which we're providing, but they need even more, and we've identified them and we've given them a monthly visit, and that's going to be taken away, so that I believe the ball is in their court then to ask for any extra support that they might need, whereas they've become used to receiving an automatic monthly visit. Correct me if I'm not right in that explanation, but I just feel that if we could perhaps have not stopped the monthly visits altogether, make them bi-monthly and save twenty, I don't know, we wouldn't, perhaps we wouldn't, that's not how it works, maybe we can find some money out of this material... Maybe we can find some money out of this material recycling facility thing, so that people in, you know, who are in their own homes and perhaps through no reason of their own, because of disability, vulnerability, or whatever, I just feel that it's a measly amount, really, and we're taking away from people an absolute lifeline, and I'm very sceptical, and I don't think it's a good decision.
Thank you, councillor Else. I think Kelvin's going to answer this.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, councillor Else. Unfortunately, this reflects a decision made at County. This is the reduction in supporting people funds that's reflected in the £40,000 saving. It's not something that we've brought for, me as a service head have brought forward as a saving. But to put your mind at rest, we will look, if you look at the line above, that's about outreach into many more people. We're looking to try and use the team much more effectively to reach out and increase the target of, we have 2,000 current clients, trying to double that over the next year, so trying to really reach out much more. So I can assure you, it's not going to put at risk our most vulnerable adults, quite the opposite.
A short reply, please.
Thank you. So am I right, then? They're receiving a monthly visit at the moment, an automatic monthly visit, and they're not going to be receiving that as from when?
The supporting people funds were cut from the end of this financial year, so for the next financial year, we won't receive that £40,000 to deliver that monthly service. What we will be doing is moving forward to a needs-based sort of floating service, and we're working on a SLA linked with Surrey County Council on that.
Can I just come in there? I understand what you're telling me, but how will that be monitored? What, I mean, in terms of, I mean, what will we see on the ground? I mean, if they're having a monthly visit at the present time, I mean, I don't understand how it's going to work.
In essence, it reflects the change in focus of adult social care and supporting people funding. They wanted to change the approach to focus on needs in the community.
Just to reinforce, so this is a reduction being made by Surrey County Council, and it's being reflected in our budget, so it's not a decision that waverly has taken, it's not something that the head of service is proposing, it's simply reflecting the fact that a grant that did exist will no longer exist from the 1st of April. I do know that the staff in Careline have been working closely with those people who have been receiving the service previously, to make sure that any other support that's available, they have access to it, and any other services that may provide them with the support they need is available. But that's not because we're making the decision, the decision has been taken by Surrey County Council.
One last short response to that, please.
I promise. So it's already needs-based, and the need has been decided that they need a monthly visit. We've already made that judgment, so to say it's going to be needs-based, it already is. I would just encourage us to try and find some money from somewhere to continue that which we have started. We've given them, we've raised the level of expectation, and we're now going to take that away from them.
Thank you. Okay. Wyatt?
Can I come in and support on this, because I think we're trying to bamboozle things a little? If there's £40,000 being spent on something, whatever it is, and we used to get a grant for that, okay, the people who've made the grant have switched it off, so there's a saving that we don't get that grant anymore. But that doesn't mean to say that we decide not to spend the £40,000, and indeed the people out there are still expecting it to be spent, because they're still expecting the people to turn up. So does that mean that whilst there's a saving on this page, there's an increase in costs somewhere else, where we're somewhere else taking up that activity and effort?
Chairman, if I could respond by just tackling it in a slightly different way, there are from time to time funding sources that are available. Sometimes they come from national government, sometimes they're available on a regional basis, sometimes from Surrey County Council. And we can't guarantee how long that funding may continue. And certainly, where funding's available, we want to make sure that Waverley benefits from it. But we have to recognise when we take on responsibility for delivering a service on another's behalf, that ultimately, that doesn't mean that when the funding disappears, at some point, which it inevitably does, that Waverley then automatically steps in and uses Waverley taxpayers' money to supplement the service. Because if we did that, I don't think we would be saying yes to the funding in the first place. So there has been a well-established understanding that when the external funders stop funding the service, then Waverley stops providing the service. And if we didn't do that, then I think it would be extremely difficult to start the journey of taking on external funding sources.
Thank you, Damian, for that. Are there any other comments? Right. Sorry, councillor Ashwood?
As the portfolio holder is sitting behind us, I wonder if she would care to note the feeling in the ONS committee and respond at some later time?
councillor King?
Thank you very much, indeed, Chairman. I do note the comments of the committee. However, and what both Damian and Kelvin have said is absolutely correct on the funding. However, moving forward, we have to recognise, and we knew that the supporting people funding was going to go, and we've accepted that, but it's up to us then to look at alternative methods of provision, excuse me, that are fit for purpose and the modern day. There is a huge amount of change in the technology now along the Careline route. We're looking at that because it will be supporting a wider number of people within our population. I know there's no substitute for having somebody knocking on your door once a month. However, we do have, we have an increased number of manpower in our two floating support workers, and so it's developing. Out of this cutting of the funding, we are putting other things in place. It's going to take a little while for it all to shake down, but I'm on the case, and so are officers. Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you. councillor Ashwood?
Thank you for letting me come back. Just thank you to councillor King for a very easily understood reply.
Any other, councillor Fosaneski?
Thank you, Chairman. Just very quickly, can I ask, please, with regards to countryside and ditches? There's £30,000 there for maintenance of ditches. Is this related to the flooding and general maintenance, or a mixture of both?
This is, oh, sorry, thank you, councillor, and this is sort of reflecting our approach since the flooding, really. What we've done over the last year is did a lot of capital work to reinstate ditches, but obviously with that, you need to have a maintenance budget then to maintain those ditches in a good safe, so this is about maintaining those ditches.
Thank you. Mary?
Thank you for allowing me to come back, and thank you for that, Kelvin, it's very useful. I can't help but feel it's a bit like treating the symptoms rather than the cause, and forgive my crude analogy, but if you think about removing hair from plug oil, the water flows much quicker, but it's got to stop somewhere. So I think the point of where it stops is the point at which we should also be addressing, because there's costs incurred there, not just with the ditches. I think the ditches could almost cause us a problem if we don't look at the end result where the water is stopping. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Bayam?
Thank you, Chairman. On this point of flooding and et cetera, and maintenance of our infrastructure to combat the flooding problem, Bramley is just in the process of completing a study, or puts that on behalf of the council and the Environment Agency through Atkins, is producing a report, which on that is putting forward some elements that they're recommending that need to be done and by the various authorities, of which Waverley is one. What chances are there that any money can be made available to undertake though? I realise we won't know what those figures are, but there is something being recommended to alleviate the flooding problems that we do have in Bramley, and I hope that something can come forward on that to get us through another winter without floods. The other point I'd like to bring up, while, the materials reclamation facility, there's a third acronym. I always thought it was reclamation rather than the other two acronyms that came forward, but we'll throw it into the hat just as an extra one. I have to say that I was always very sceptical of the process of going through a MRF. I liked the clean method of collecting paper and selling it, rather than this system where we have no control particularly over how we receive our funds for whatever materials we send to them and get sold. And of course, the price fluctuates as it always did, which is a concern, and I remember the fact that we only had this guarantee for three years, so I'm not surprised. Others clearly are. I'm not surprised that this is happening. I look forward to hearing how we go forward and what's going to happen.
Damian? Sorry, Rob?
Chairman, I don't really want to reopen this kind of worms, but certainly it's something that we're actively looking at at the moment, but I think it's worth pointing out that even taking into account the potential risk coming into the new financial year, the new service saved best part of £700,000 or £800,000 at the time when we moved across, so even now, we're still in a much better position than we were under the old system, curbside sorting, collecting, much less recycling.
Thank you for that. Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay. Members, Emma's been making notes on the comments raised during debate, which will be circulated with the draft minutes following the meeting. Thank you. Moving on to item eight, Waverley Community Partnership. Sorry? Oh, 7B, sorry. Okay. Sorry, I'm out of sync here. General Fund Capital Programme, item 7B. I would like to invite Peter Vickers to introduce the report to the committee, please.
Thank you, Chairman. In terms of contribution here, Brian can talk you through some of the detail, but in terms of how it was compiled, it was part of the overall budget-setting process. So, Brian, just to say, the highlights?
So on the capital report, the detail is on page 116 for a list of capital projects, and then after that, we move on to page 117, which is a list of revenue projects.
Are there any questions, members, please? councillor James, followed by councillor Mulliner, followed by councillor Ramsdale. councillor James, please.
Chairman, thank you very much. I've got two questions, please. The first one is on page 128, and the project justification is the waste and recycling container replacement. And the point I'd like to raise is that we're going to reduce the residual waste bin without giving our electorate the opportunity to choose. We're forcing them down a particular route, and if, as we used to have, there are families out there that have got more than a certain number of members, and they're still generating a certain amount of residual waste, which won't fit into the smaller, black-wheeled bin, what are they going to do about it? And it doesn't seem particularly fair or reasonable that we're not at least leaving open the option for a given timeframe maybe, or some other method, or even a co-payment to allow people not to have to accept something which may not be useful to them. So maybe just a thought there, maybe the officers could reassure us. And then the second one is on page 140, which is this replacement of noise equipment, recording equipment. It's a very straightforward question. Why are we buying? Why are we not leasing? We seem to be spending a lot of money outright on equipment, which even this report makes the point, becomes effectively defunct because of the advances of technology. It also highlights the fact that we've got an app that more and more people could be encouraged to use. So why are we spending outright when there are other options available? Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you. I think I know the answer to the first question, but Rob, would you like to come through with that?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. On the residual waste bin capacity, the 140-litre bins are intended to reflect the fact that actually nearly 80% of what is collected by our refused contractor is potentially recyclable. However, what we're actually offering here, and I'm going to apologise if it's not clear in the project justification form, is the option for people who wish to replace their bin to have a free 140-litre bin. If they choose to have a 240-litre bin, they are required to pay for it, which has always been the case. It's just that we've never offered in the past the option of a free, smaller bin. So it's an incentive to residents to downscale their residual capacity to reflect the fact that most of their waste can now be recycled. On the second point, I'm afraid I'm not so conversant with this, and certainly I could take that away and look at that with the officers who put the bid in, but I suspect that the case has been investigated in terms of whether leasing or purchasing is better, and that actually, for the relatively small sum of money in the grand scheme of things, looking at the capital programme, it has been concluded that it's better to purchase, but I can certainly take that away and look at that and feedback to councillor James.
I'd like you to feedback to all councillors on that. Come back to this committee for the next committee meeting and explain what your findings are, that would be great. Just going back to the first point that councillor James made with regard to the size of the bins, I actually welcome that, because you're right, I know in my case, you know, it's not even half-full, my big bin, no, but the recycling bin is chock-a-block, so I think it's a good move, and it may encourage people to recycle more with a bit of luck. Okay. Thank you. councillor James, do you want to come back?
Very simple, thank you very much. It sounds like there's a good news bit here, which is if we can get the project justification reworded, it might come across better. But I do think we have to be careful we don't fall into the trap of one-size-fits-all is the only option for our electorate. It's not fair.
Thank you. councillor Mulliner, next, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Your speed of moving between items is very impressive, and it left me slightly behind. I have one final question on page 19, which I couldn't find the detailed sheet for, and that's the bottom, that's line 28. Revenue projects not in draft budget, £418,680. Could Brian possibly enlighten us as to what sort of things those are?
Yes, yes. That's basically what we've been looking at on page 117. So they are the revenue projects within the capital report. The difference is that in simple terms, the revenue projects don't have a long-term asset, so they have to be classed as revenue, so they find their way in the revenue budget as opposed to the capital programme.
I was wondering that, but the numbers don't quite tie up. It's 418680. How do I extract that?
The summer corporate ONS that went to corporate ONS and community ONS is the only ones listed here.
Sorry, the total here is 444755. The number on the front is 418680, which is less. So are there negative spends in the corporate side?
Yes, the Waverley funding is the relevant figure, basically.
I mean, the, why is it so?
I think probably when you see the executive papers, it will be clearer, because of the whole of the schemes are put together, and then the Waverley funding finds its way into the revenue budget, as opposed to external funding, which is paid for obviously by outside.
Chairman, if I can just add to Brian's explanation, yeah, not all of our capital schemes and our revenue projects are funded from Waverley sources of funding, and looking along page 117, of the total of 444775, 393675 is funded from the budget on page 19, plus the corporate schemes that are also funded, that comes to the 418680. So, is that okay? Okay. Thank you, Chairman. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Councillor Ramsdale, followed by councillor Isherwood, followed by councillor Bayham.
Chairman, thank you. I'm puzzled as to how we seem to have leapt to capital, and I thought we were going to spend time on annexes six, seven, and eight. And I thought the chief accountant was going to introduce those and take them in step. So can we either finish capital and go back, or go back now? But I think there's unanswered questions over that range.
And I'm very happy to do either. It's obviously your decision. I assumed you were wanting to speed the meeting along, so I didn't...
Okay, fine. Can we go to annexes six, seven, and eight now?
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll come back to those councillors who want to speak after this, these items. Thank you.
So some of those questions might relate to these annexes, presumably. So page 39 is the start of the planning services estimates, and I wanted to draw attention to page 42 in particular, which is where the additional income that I have been mentioning of £380,000 shows the difference between column two and column three. You'll see the inquiry fee has jumped from £100,000 to £180,000, and the planning fee income from £800,000 to 1.1 million. I then have a point to deal with in terms of the relationship between that income and building control income, because it's very true that, in the long run, there should be some correlation between planning income and building control income, which we hope there will be. The point being that building control income, although it's gone up, clearly hasn't gone up, this is page 44, line 21, clearly hasn't gone up to such a significant amount. And there is a time lag factor which is significant. I think another significant point is that many planning applications, particularly in fact a lot of the larger ones, are refused, and the applicant pays their fee regardless of whether they're refused or approved. And the third factor is the very high level of planning fees for the large applications. And we're more talking about the very high level of a few applications, which is making the income as high. It's not really planning numbers, it is the quantity. Some planning applications are, the fee is in the tens of thousands, the fees are displayed on our website, and they are national statutory fees. But as an indicator as to the size of the fee, the government has a cap of £250,000 on a planning fee, so they can be very large indeed, the individual planning fees and building control fees, although they're higher for large schemes and not of that order. And then the final point on building control fees, of course, is that there is competition, whereas planning, we are the planning authority, and people haven't got a lot of choice but to apply to us. With building control, there are private companies, and I know a lot of the larger developers actually use their own building control companies effectively, automatically. So we will never get all of the income, unfortunately. There is a final point that is less relevant, I suppose, but building control can only actually break even at the end of the day, so we're never going to actually turn around a surplus because the government won't let us. We only can break even on building control, unfortunately. So the next annex, if there are no questions on annex six on planning, the next annex is community services, which starts at page 47. And Kelvin Mills, of course, is the head of service, who will be happy to help me with any question, answering any questions. As a general point, I'd like to comment on the community partnership grants, because this is where most of them will fall. Because they are subject of a report at the end of tonight's agenda, we deliberately have left the 1516 column blank, so as not to preempt the later report. And when approved, the relevant figures will be inserted and be published in next year's budget book, and generally, the totals will be pretty similar within most services. And of course, as when we move on to the grants report, your members will see that the proposal is for the total money to be exactly the same. So although there's a lot of blank figures, there's no actual monetary saving at the end of the day.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm puzzled, and maybe it links back to the discussion we had earlier about the counselling of the grant, but why do the numbers for the care line service and care line extra special services on pages 73 and 74 seem to vary up and down so much? And I'd like to come back on two other points.
Yes, sir. I was trying not to major on that because we did discuss it earlier on, about essentially supporting people grant, which, page 73, line 19, and page 74, the income line, which is line three and line four, the supporting people grant has been cut by Surrey County Council, so that's why that's gone down. Conversely, at line 21, the income from HRA tenants, so that has actually always been higher, or in 1314 and in 1415, it was higher than the budgeted figure, so it was a budgeting error, if you want to put it that way, in that we understood that more tenants were paying a lower fee than they were. But that explains the movement in that line. The first column, of course, is the actual figure, 64835, and then in the current year, the actual is also going to be well above the 51500, and we projected the actual figures on to become the estimate till next year of around £85,000. On the next line, line 22, there has been a successful marketing campaign undertaken by Kelvin and his team, so we've boosted the numbers of private customers, which is why the income has increased on that. And then some of the staff changes in terms of costs, as we discussed earlier, do tend to follow the grant funding in the long run, because they would never have been as high were it not for the grant funding from the supporting people via Surrey County Council.
Thank you, Brian. You've got two more questions, I think. Would you like to give them both, so we can answer both at the same time?
Actually, just one on the community area, which is what we're dealing with at the moment, which is on page 80. At line 22, we include £800,000 for contracted services. Given this is training, I assume that's bringing in contracted trainers. Have we challenged the training services people to actually do more of this in-house? A big difference in cost between contracted trainers and our own staff?
Yes, thank you. I'll give a short answer, and Kelvin Mills, I might like to expand on it. Basically, line 22, the contracted services, this isn't, unlike planning, where it was agency people covering our posts, this is extra work that is carried out under a Waverley umbrella, but it's actually carried out by independent organisations elsewhere. And we benefit because by doing it under our umbrella, we pay the bills and we get income in, we actually get at least a 10% commission, so there's around £900,000 income related in that £800,000 expenditure. And those sort of volumes are massive, and we just couldn't possibly cope with that within the existing staff. They are actually things that we don't do ourselves anyway, and I'm sure Kelvin will tell you the existing staff are very fully employed, and clearly the income they are generating is excellent anyway.
I think the other advantage is with the funding being so unpredictable, by working with different organisations, it means, you know, we level out our staff and we don't overstaff if funding drops. We work with organisations that way. And I will say that the biggest plus of it is we're helping more people into work, more people in apprenticeships in different areas, which we wouldn't have the expertise in delivering.
Okay, carry on. Thank you.
So the next annex is annex eight on the environment, and of course, Rob Anderton is the relevant head of service. I've got one particular point to mention, which is on page 85 and then 87. On page 85, the rents figure has dropped from column two, £92,000, to column three, £46,000. And on page 87, the rents figure has gone up dramatically. This is the, what this is, the £92,000 is the, it's a book entry, it's the notional rent of the depot at Farnham that Veolia use, and it is actually provided at no cost under the contract, because we couldn't see the point of charging any contractor who would then promptly include it as part of the cost and charge us back. So it is a charge that we make to the property, well, we make it to the service, the income goes into the property side, as it's a property asset. And up until this, and including 1415, I simply charged the total of the refuse and recycling contract to the refuse page, which is the £92,000. And we have decided it would be more appropriate to split it 50/50 between the refuse collection service and the waste recycling service. The waste recycling service actually take up a very large share of the depot, so it's a fairer way of doing the charge. The 7960 and the balance in figure in 1516 is simply the use of the car park spaces by recycling containers that gets charged to recycling and then credited to the car park budget.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Councillor James?
Thank you, Chair. I'm on page 87, and I'm on line 23, the contract mobilisation, which in 2013, 2014, £137,000. Then it drops, disappears, and it's disappeared again, and yet we've just discussed £186,000 bill elsewhere. So can somebody just reconcile this for me, why we seem to have these very high figures that seem to come and go? Thank you.
Yeah, the simple answer is that these are the projects, so they do occur in some years and not others. So the project lists that you've seen within revenue will become part of the 1516 estimate for containers when it's approved. And of course, 1314 is when we were doing the mobilisation in a big way, so that's why the actual costs show there. But there wasn't really anything in the current year.
Yeah, you can respond, yeah.
Chair, thank you. Can I just come back? I thought some ONS committees ago, we talked about some of the ideas, about other, you know, additions to the curbside recycling collection, for instance. So if that's the case, why, given that explanation, which I appreciate, why haven't we got that contract mobilisation element in for the forthcoming year? Because we've already talked about some new ideas.
Chairman, I believe the figure, the 137189, relates to the mobilisation of the new subscription garden waste service specifically. It has historically related to the rollout of the blue bins in the past and so on. What we're looking at at the moment is the plan that councillor James just raised, which came to this committee some months back now, around how we will further improve our recycling performance. That report will be coming back to this committee in March with an update on where we are with the various actions that we identified there. And amongst the budget proposals within these papers today is more money for communications, which is one of the areas that we specifically talked about in detail when we looked at it in this committee, and recognise that that's really where our efforts need to be right now, is promoting the service more, to encourage people to use it more and to better understand it.
Any other comments on this item? Yes, councillor Bayham?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not quite sure whether you're going to come back to me, or there was others, I think, we had.
Yes, I am going to come back once we've finished with these annexes.
But mine is on the project justification thing, on the waste recycling, so it seems appropriate to speak now, perhaps. I have to say, I'm slightly bemused by the statements about the black wheel bins. I was confused before, I think I'm sort of more confused now. And our black bins were introduced 25, 26 years ago, I can't remember exactly when, certainly well before I became a councillor 20 years ago. And having been delivered to every household, no new households get a bin or a replacement bin, it's their responsibility. It's only our responsibility when we change the service to provide them with the facility to do it. My black bin, even though it's been misused in the past, is still working perfectly well, I'm glad to say. I wonder whether it ought to be changed into a 140-litre bin, but I can't imagine why. I've got, my bin goes out every eight to 12 weeks, maybe longer, so if I had a smaller bin, it might have to go out twice as frequently, and it wouldn't, it'd just give more work to Veolia to have that, my bin, to empty. I'm sure that's not a great hindrance to them, but I can't see why. Initially, and it's an educational process for us all, I think, when we first started, it were two 40-litre bins, and everybody else had a choice of one 20-litre, which we've had to change because they don't fit onto the system. So I can't see why we're providing these black, smaller bins. Are people going to generate more waste? I think it's a wasted item. The other items within there are good, but I don't think that's good, it's a wasted item.
To be fair to the officers, I think they've explained that once already, but I don't know whether you want to come back very quickly on that.
Chairman, I think the bottom line is that not everybody is such a committed recycler as councillor Bayham, and some people who haven't yet sort of embraced the blue bin food waste system to such an extent, if they come to us for a new bin, we will encourage them to take a free 140-litre bin rather than buy a 240-litre bin. And it's just really giving people that choice. You know, we still offer the option of buying a 240-litre bin if they wish, and if they choose to buy one and present it every eight weeks, then that's absolutely fine by us.
Okay, thank you. Okay, right. Are there any more comments on the general fund budget? Otherwise, we can move on to the capital programme on item 7B. Okay? Can we move on? Oh, sorry, Brian.
The final annex was the fees and charge annex, page 95. So if there are any questions on the fees and charges, the one that I was asked to highlight is on page 96, line 10, which is the development control consultative forum, because there's a significant increase proposed. And that basically reflects a large amount of officer time involved in setting up the consultative forums, which are widely valued as a quality and useful forum, but they're only such because of the amount of officer time, both planning officers and the democratic services' time in setting up these meetings. So that's why the increase from £2,400 to £4,000 is proposed, and otherwise, the pre-application advice charges are staying the same.
Thank you. Okay, can we move on now to the capital programme? Our 7B, just going back to previous requests, councillor Ramsdale, followed by councillor Isherwood. So you're clear at the moment? Okay. Councillor Isherwood?
Really, Chairman, I think it's all been said. I thought we were trying to improve our recycling rate, we're still quite a few percentage points away from it, therefore the 120 bin, like councillor Bayham has said, is necessary. My 240 hadn't been out for a couple of months, and won't go out this week, are there?
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Are there any other questions? Okay. Yeah, Emma has been making notes on the comments raised during the debate, which will be circulated with the draft minutes following the meeting. with the draft minutes following the meeting. Moving on to item eight, Waverley Community Partnership, applications for revenue funding. I'd like to invite Damien Roberts to introduce the report to the committee, please.
Thank you, Chairman. If I just give a quick overview of this report. Overall, this is a positive report for the voluntary sector in Waverley. It proposes that the overall level of funding to voluntary sector organisations is protected at the same level as was funded last year, and this equates to a commitment overall of about seven-hundred-and-forty thousand pounds. This year, the approach also better recognises achievements in the voluntary sector, and particularly those organisations and services that are performing well and making a real difference in their communities. This year, the proposals also increased the proportion of funding for services for older people, in line with Waverley's demographics. We have one of the largest older populations in Surrey. As an example, this translates into more funding for Rowley Centre in Cranley, which is seeing a sixteen percent increase in funding, and Brightwell's Gosterie Centre in Farnham, which is seeing a ten percent increase in funding. The report also marks the next phase in a positive transition from traditional grants to service-level agreements. And service-level agreements are very much about building stronger partnerships with the voluntary sector, and a much greater focus on outcomes, i.e. what does Waverley get for the money that it provides those organisations? And this report, as well as increases in funding for a number of existing service-level agreements, this report also proposes that four more organisations, Cranley Arts Centre, Farncombe Day Centre, Clock House in Milford, and the Orchard Club in Hazelmead, will in future be funded through service-level agreements, I think reflecting a maturity in the relationship with those organisations. Within the papers, there is one service that the report proposes not to fund, and that is the Age UK Information and Advice Service, and I just wanted to outline the main reasons that the report sets out for this. Firstly, the Information and Advice Service that has been provided by Age UK Waverley does not operate borough-wide, and therefore there are people in different parts of the borough, in some cases in areas of high need, that simply are unable to access this service. The second issue is that the cost of this service is significantly higher than can be provided by other local information and advice providers within the area. And that's particularly because some of the other providers are able to operate and benefit from economies of scale, but also are able to access a greater number of trained volunteers. Another reason is that the quality of advice given through the Information and Advice Service from Age UK Waverley does not meet the quality standards achieved by other organisations. And in particular, the Citizens Advice Waverley is able to provide financial debt advice, which is something that Age UK Waverley have never been able to do. And you can imagine, in the difficult financial climate for many of our residents, escalating debts is a major issue that they do need advice on. And I think the final reason I want to bring to the attention of the committee is that in Waverley, we already have two organisations that are already funded, one from Waverley Council and one from Surrey County Council, to provide a borough-wide information and advice service, and that's Age UK Surrey and Citizens Advice Waverley. So there is already funding for a borough-wide service, and therefore any additional funding would be a duplication of effort. I think overall, Chairman, just to sum up, I think the approach taken this year is positive, and it's pragmatic, and it's recognising the significant improvement in outcomes being achieved by many of our voluntary sector organisations, and a continuing improvement in our relationship with those sectors, working in partnership to deliver for local people.
Members, we are asked to consider the comments from the Grant Subcommittee and pass further observations, if any, on the applications of funding to the executive. Does anyone have any questions? Of the officers, please. Councillor James, followed by councillor Else, followed by councillor Isherwood, followed by councillor Ellis.
Chairman, thank you. I'm looking at the paragraph titled 'Emergency Funding Provision' on page one-five-one, and I'm asking for a bit of clarity, please. If it's my reading and interpretation, I apologise in advance, but the statement says the remaining balance of forty thousand four hundred and ten for twenty fourteen fifteen would again support any unexpected or urgent requests for support throughout the year. If you then go to the table on the other side, top, we start off with forty-five thousand four hundred and ten, and then we drop to nineteen thousand four hundred and twenty. So my question is, what's happened to this carryover?
I think we know the answer to this. Graham?
Chairman, there was forty-five four ten available in fourteen fifteen, of which five thousand pounds currently has been allocated. So there's forty thousand four hundred and ten still unspent in the current year, and the proposal is to carry that forward to provide an urgent fund, you know, going forward, unless demands for that come along in the next couple of months before the end of the financial year. The nineteen four twenty is not an emergency funding provision. At the moment, it's classified as reserve funds in the fifteen sixteen allocation.
So the total fund going forward is the total of the both figures? Am I right in thinking that? That's what's still there, isn't it? Katie?
Sorry, Chairman, could you just ask that question again, please? Sorry. The total... Which total are we referring to, Chairman? Sorry.
Councillor Ramsdale.
We've got those two numbers, the nineteen four-two-oh and the forty-four-one-oh. I understand the forty-four-one-oh is a general reserve against grants, whereas the nineteen four-two-oh is specifically a reserve for SLAs.
That's correct, Chairman. Yes, it's a shame the table's split over the page, because that looks better, but that is correct. And the forty-four-one-oh, there's still a balance there, yes. If that is still the balance at the end of this financial year, then members will be asked to carry that forward for a general provision.
You want to come back down?
Chair, thanks. Can we just make that a bit clearer? I mean, I'm not an accountant, and the fact that we've just spent three minutes explaining that sentence, when, as far as I could tell, we should have been adding forty thousand one hundred and fourteen to nineteen thousand four hundred and twenty, merely that point.
I don't disagree with that. We did ask that question previously, and we made that point, and I think if next year we can do that, that would be helpful. Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Else.
Thank you, Chairman. And so, if you will indulge me, I just... I'm not an accountant either, but I actually did understand that part of it, so it just shows you, doesn't it? Some sort of miracle has happened. The council's budget has been cut by the government by a further thirty percent, and despite this, the figures for grant aid, which we are presented with tonight, remain the same for next year as now in the current year. And there's a greater proportion than even then going to organisations providing services for older people. But it's vitally important that the qualifying criteria must be robust and strictly adhered to. Now, some of this is a repeat of what Damien said, for which I apologise, but I had no idea what he was going to say, and he didn't have any idea what I was going to say, so I'll carry on if I may. So we've heard that over three-quarters of a million pounds, which includes nearly twenty thousand pounds to be kept as a reserve to meet any extra and unexpected community needs, has been set aside to support the organisations working within Waverley, who are at the very heart of our community, providing essential support and social and recreational services across the borough. On top of this, we have a further forty thousand, representing an emergency funding provision to allow us to again support any urgent requests throughout the year. We've heard that it has been decided to recommend that funding for Age UK Waverley Advice and Information Service should cease, and as a Waverley observer for this organisation over the last two years, in my opinion, this is the correct decision. It has been demonstrated, certainly to my satisfaction, that the advice and information service which Age UK Waverley have been providing has not been borough-wide, and we have eighteen months of monitoring evidence of this. At Age UK Waverley board meetings, this has been repeatedly pointed out by officers. There has been plenty of time for the problem to be addressed. It has not been. The requirements of the grant have not been fulfilled, and therefore it is right that Waverley has come to this point. And this is certainly supported by the fact, we've heard already, that we're also grant-aiding borough-wide advice and information services via Citizens Advice, and we have Age UK Surrey, an organisation entirely separate from Age UK Waverley, and there is also the Harbing Godleming High Street. All those Waverley residents who require advice and information service will have easy access to one. There is no reason for this duplication. In the case of Rowleys in Cranley, which is governed by Age UK Waverley, however, we see that an increase in funding of sixteen percent has been recommended, and this is in recognition of the good work being done there, I believe. I think it's appropriate that this grant to Rowleys should be ring-fenced, and that we should require that it's placed in an Age UK Waverley's restricted fund. And I would also ask that we ensure that we are satisfied, it is transparently recorded, and that it is only used for Rowleys. Not only have our officers developed an excellent proactive financial support system for these grant-aided organisations, but they've once more been canny enough to reserve further sums of money, so as to be able to reactively respond to an emergency request, should it be deemed appropriate, and I congratulate them. This has involved a lot of very hard work and great attention to detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Else. Councillor Isherwood, followed by councillor Patricia Ellis.
Thank you, Chairman. I refer to the Three Counties Money Advice, it's paragraph fifteen on page one-hundred-and-sixty-six. I'm not disagreeing with the Subcommittee's note at all, and not for making a grant, but I'd just make a number of observations and hope that come next September, the Three Counties Money Advice team give all the details that's necessary. They've been operating for seven years in Hazelmead. They've recently moved to Haysaway, where they've seen a three-hundred percent increase in customers attending. They are licensed to deal with debt, as are the CAB. They deal with purely with benefits and debt, housing benefit, council tax issues, and the 'do not lose your home' organisation that we operate. As they're right next to the Waverley locality office, many of the problems that are presented to them can be dealt with on a one-stop-shop basis, and I sincerely hope that next year they do submit rather more detail than we've seen this year. So just note that next September, I hope the Three Counties Money Advice team get their reward.
Thank you, councillor Isherwood. Katie, do you want to come back on that at all?
The only other thing I'd say is that they're struggling through the year, and they obviously maybe need some financial assistance. We do have the emergency fund as well, so, you know, they're getting a significant increase that has a demand on them.
Thank you very much, Katie. We did speak earlier today. They are in fact applying to Hazelmead Town Council for a grant, so we'll see how that goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Patricia Ellis, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Much of what I wanted to say has already been said, so I won't go over the ground again, but I particularly wanted to address the issue of Age UK Waverley and Rowleys. I have to say that this council has strongly supported the voluntary organisations for many years now, and especially the elderly and the vulnerable, and gives a lot of officer time and support and financial aid as well. On a personal level, I was very involved with Age UK Waverley and Rowleys for almost twenty years, so I do feel that I can speak with some experience about how the organisations operate. I do fully accept, and I think that everybody here knows, that it's very difficult to provide a service within the borough of Waverley, because geographically it's so very, very large, and on the limited funds that are available to Age UK Waverley, I'm very sorry to say that they have never been able to provide the information and advice service across the whole of the borough. And I think this has been gone into by previous speakers quite comprehensively. And also, the services to the elderly in information and advice are being provided by two other organisations. If I felt that the service to the elderly and the vulnerable in terms of information and advice was going to be lessened by the proposals, then I really wouldn't be able to support them. But actually, having been involved for all of these years and having sought advice from the officers, and I do thank them for all their support, I would not be able to support the proposals, but I do feel reassured that actually the information and advice service will improve, and it will reach a huge number of residents in the borough who are currently not receiving that service, not able to access it. So I would also just like to say that I very much appreciate the increased funding to Rowleys, and they're doing wonderful work. They've had difficult times with building works going on around them, and I would like to support my colleague here's recommendation that the ring-fenced funds are placed in restricted funds, so that we can understand exactly how this funding is managed. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the officers.
Thank you, councillor Ellis. I'd like now to ask the portfolio holder, Carol King, to make some comments, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Actually, the portfolio holder for grants is councillor Reynolds, but I...
Sorry, I apologise, yes.
Don't worry, it comes under my umbrella anyway for older people. But actually, what I was going to say, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to use this forum to say it, was this time last year, I was the portfolio holder for grants, and I can remember standing in this chamber, expressing the hope and the wish that we would be able to move all our centres for daycare for our older residents into an SLA. And I'm absolutely delighted and would like to congratulate them, because the centres have worked incredibly hard to achieve and come up to the standard we would expect and deliver the services for older people that are meaningful, they're really working well with us as a partner, partnership working is really working here, and I'm really, really pleased for them that they've managed to achieve that. This is the first year for some of them, and I think I've no doubt that they're going to go on from strength to strength, so I really would like to congratulate them. And while passing, I would also like to thank, and I know, I'm sure Stephen's going to do the same, but I really like to thank Jane Todd particularly, because she has worked so hard, she's not here tonight, on making sure that this actually works, that we are getting the figures that we need, with the evidence base is there, and I just believe it's working, and thank you very much.
Councillor Reynolds?
Thank you, Chairman. If I may, yes, I'd just like to reiterate what councillor King has just said. Thank Jane Todd and her team, and Katie and Damien for all the hard work they've put in. Thank councillor Else and our friends in Cranley for those comments about Age UK Waverley. It's not a decision we've taken lightly, but the problem is that there is a funding service that has already been paid by our taxpayers through their Surrey County Council precept that is available to residents in Waverley, but can't be accessed by residents in Waverley because Age UK Waverley have the... because Age UK Waverley have the right to operate in Waverley, although that doesn't seem to quite function in Farnham and Hazelmead, where I think Age UK Surrey are providing a limited service because it's not being provided elsewhere. But with our increased support to the CAB, which is getting an increase of 8% this year, I'm hoping and I'm really pretty sure that we can cover all the services that Age UK Waverley were providing, but improve it because it'll be across the borough, which isn't just Cranley U-Hurst, it'll be in Farnham and Godleming and Hazelmead, which have 80% of the elderly population. But so far, they're getting less than half of the advice inquiries going to Age UK Waverley from those elements of the parts of the borough. So I think it's a good news story. We have got a bit of extra funding, as we've talked about earlier, should the CAB or anyone else need a little bit extra to take up, if that proves necessary. But I think we've got a robust set of proposals. I thank the sub-team on this committee for their work and thank this committee for looking at it this evening. And obviously, if you've got any further recommendations, we will discuss them at an executive next week and obviously at full council in due course. But thank you all very much.
Thank you, councillor Reynolds. And, sorry, councillor Forasewski?
Thank you, chairman. This was one of the reasons, a couple of ONEs ago, that I pushed so hard for to get services like this to the forefront of everybody's attention because this was such a complex and misunderstood. For some members, it was very difficult to understand how this all added up and worked together. And I think if we'd have had the opportunity to have had a presentation of something from Age UK in a transparent and open forum, it would have eluded a lot of the fears from people who were asking questions about this service that might have a detrimental effect on. So that was one of the reasons I was pushing for it then. But we are where we are and I'm delighted to see that we're moving towards a service agreement and that extra 16%, that 16% is, I'm sure, going to be of great value. I know it's not the role or the job of this council or this organisation to work out or worry about what's going to happen to Age UK. But are we confident that the steps we're taking now will make sure that nobody is disadvantaged or will suffer as a result of this action and are clear about the alternative processes involved to help that move forward? Because there may be some people currently using that service who may be unaware of this and then not know which way to go. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Just to go back on your first comment, I don't think we can take presentations from every applicant who was coming for grants. We have to go through the process and everybody's treated the same and fairly. Would you like to comment on the other part of the points that councillor Forasewski made with regard to are we confident in that our residents will be getting the service that they need?
Chairman, to the best of our understanding, but recognising at the same time that we're talking about organisations that are independently governed, that need to make their own decisions. But I think this committee's recommendation relating to ring-fencing the money for Rowleys and placing it in restricted funds, I think, does give greater assurance to this committee and the council that the funding that's been identified and the increased funding in particular will be spent on supporting the continued success of the day centre.
councillor Ramsdale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was that very point about being confident that the money that goes to Rowleys stays in Rowleys. I'm pleased to hear about the ring-fenced and restricted, but it's very well introducing rules like that. But I think we ought to have the power to inspect and check that that actually happens. I'm not at all sure that a general audit done for the purposes of the Charity Commission would cover that. So perhaps our finance team could look at how we could have some ability to inspect Rowley's numbers to check that all of the money gets spent on all of the right things. Can I also, Mr. Chairman, observe the two recommendations we made for changes at the Subcommittee and commend them to this group, which was that the Rural Life Centre in Farnham, very successful, almost a commercial organisation, perhaps doesn't need as much grant and was favoured by those around the table. But the one I was particularly concerned about was A Place To Be, the youth group. I think it's a youth group that's struggled recently, needs our help. And simply to cut their grant by 50% is perhaps going to give them a kiss of death. Whereas to say that they can have the full amount if they start to meet the conditions and start to react and improve would be a better way forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other? Oh, sorry. Mary?
Thank you, chairman, and thank you for letting me come back, please. I don't want you to think that I'm going to misguide this committee by thinking that every applicant who come here looking for a grant should come to the table and explain themselves. That really isn't what I was saying. But I think in this particular case, we didn't want to look at Age UK in isolation. It was all about elderly services in general. And I think what it would have done for us was it would have showcased what we've done well. It would have actually given us an opportunity to make it clear to everybody and actually say, in rather than creating some bad press, actually producing some good press, that what we do, we actually do quite well. Thank you, chairman.
I take your point. If that's it, members, I'd like to make a comment personally here. I'm quite involved with a particular community centre on behalf of Waverley Borough Council. And I have seen fantastic improvements over the last 12 months. And a lot of that is down to the team we have at Waverley Borough Council. And I'd like to express my gratitude to them for all their hard work and all the officers and all the members for supporting them. People are very fortunate in Waverley to have such an efficient organisation. We don't always get the plaudits that we should do. I know my mum, who lives in the Welsh Valleys, their day centres closed down because they haven't got any money. And it's a very sad time and they've let out to a commercial organisation. But we at Waverley continue to support our elderly residents. And I'd like to thank everybody involved, on behalf of the committee, for all their hard work. Thank you very much on that. And finally, members, moving to the recommendation. Emma's been making notes on the comments raised during the debate, which will be circulated with the draft minutes following the meeting. Thank you for attending and the meeting is now closed.